Okay. I call to order the November 4th, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Mr. Messer, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wagner, please call roll. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Members of the public who wish to speak during hearing the public must request to do so during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking the chat button, submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the visibility icon when you are recognized to speak. Individuals who request to be heard after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak. Thank you. Superintendent, please introduce our first presentation.
Yes, so for this evening, all the presentations go together. And so I'm going to do one introduction to connect all the dots and all the pieces. We are going to start in reverse order, and then we're going to start with our safety data. Each board meeting, we provide an update to the health data for the city of Cincinnati, the county, Hamilton County, as well as Cincinnati Public Schools. So we will do that this evening, and then we're going to go from there right into blended learning, and then we're going to take a deep dive into three schools on the west side and look at the west side program. So as they're pulling up my PowerPoint slides, I am more than happy today. Next slide, please. If you could see the smile on my face from ear to ear under the mask, you would know that along with the board, I am extremely grateful, excited, happy, appreciative of all of our voters who came out to support Cincinnati Schools in a huge way. Next two slides, please. So imagine that the public believes so much in our children and so much in the community and the district and our future that in the midst of a worldwide pandemic, economic downturn, unemployment, and injustices that are taking place all across the United States, they believe so firmly in our kids to support a levy to the degree in which it was supported is phenomenal. I mean unbelievable. It is very exciting day yesterday. It was a very exciting day today. You can see some examples of our young people who express their appreciation to our voters. So number one, we want to thank all of our voters who came out to support us. We are so excited and so appreciative. You are so generous, not only with your money, your time, but just your interest in our districts. So we want to thank all of our voters, all of our volunteers. We had thousands upon thousands of people who wrote postcards, who made phone calls, who did text messaging, who put up these huge signs all across the city. So thank you to all of our volunteers, to our parents and our grandparents who supported this. We thank you for your efforts and work, and to all of our staff at all the different levels within Cincinnati Public Schools really supported this effort. The business community also really came together to work with us literally on a weekly basis on the advisory team for the levy to also make this happen. As you know, the levy is for $48 million. Fifteen million of that is to support preschool, not only preschool within Cincinnati Public, but also preschools with our community providers. And this is all done in collaboration with Cincinnati Preschool Promise. So we are extremely appreciative, grateful, and excited about the work that we have been able to do together with Cincinnati Preschool Promise. And now because of this money, we're excited about the work that we'll be able to do over the next five years. This levy is not only for preschool. We know that it's still important for our kids to have a strong start with preschool, but it supports pre-K through 12th grade. This supports what happens to our young people after they leave our doors, graduate, and go into a career pathway. So again, I could not be more excited than today, than last night when we were at the Board of Elections, to finally be able to call it and say the levy has passed by a huge margin. So thank you to everyone. Thank you to our board and everyone who supported this levy. Thank you. All right, next slide. So this evening, here's what we're going to cover. The major priorities for our district, and those priorities are identified as safety being our number one priority. And so you're going to hear some information about our community data, our city data, our county data, and Cincinnati Public Schools data in particular. Another priority obviously is education. And so you're going to hear some information tonight. So we're going to go right from the community data and the health data right into our blended learning update so that you can see what's happening as it relates to blended learning and as well as how we are closing the gap between what our kids experienced last winter in comparison to right now. And then we're going to take a deep dive into a subset of schools, three schools on the west side of town. We're very excited to hear about the work that they have been doing since the beginning of the school year. Their work actually started last year. So I think it's really important to always remember and keep in mind that despite the fact that we're in a pandemic CPS, we are moving forward, and we have a lot of dedicated staff who are at work each and every day making this happen. And so I'm so excited to be able to say that we are progressive and that we're moving forward. So at this point in time, I am going to turn our presentation over to Sarah Trumbull Oliver, and she's going to provide a community health update. And then from there, we will go straight into our blended learning presentation, and from there into a deep dive into three schools on the west side of town. Again, thank you, everyone. We're so excited to be here. Sarah?
Good evening. So I do have an update tonight for our community health data. Next slide, please. For our city of Cincinnati daily new cases, we do continue to see an increase in the daily new cases for the past four weeks now. We have reached the peak of our seven-day average that we saw back in July. On the next slide, you will see that for the past 14 days of city new cases, we have three days that were a decreasing seven-day average. Taking this daily average and dividing by the number of individuals, we are now at 23 new cases per 100,000 individuals, which is up from 21 last week. For Hamilton County, we're at 28 daily new cases per 100,000. And our regional health professionals have a suggested threshold to recommend distance learning at 25 new cases per 100,000. On the next slide, our positivity rate has increased as well. For the city of Cincinnati, it is at 4.0%, and for Hamilton County outside of Cincinnati, it's at 6%. On the next slide, the average length to get test results remains unchanged. One important addition that I want to add is a huge part of our district's safety plan is being able to identify and isolate positive cases. And Paul McDowell has worked with our local health partners to administer free onsite employee testing on a rotating basis at all of our locations. And so far, we have tested over 1,200 employees at 13 locations. So this is a tremendous addition to our safety plan and something that we're not aware of any other district that is able to provide this. On the next slide, our Hamilton County rating on the Ohio Public Health Advisory System has remained at Level 3 RED. As of last week, we are now meeting four of the seven indicators, which is down from six of the seven indicators. The indicators that we were no longer meeting were the outpatient visits and the hospital admissions, which a county would be considered as meeting that indicator if they have five consecutive days of increases in those measures. We'll get an update on this measure tomorrow afternoon. So on the next slide, our regional health professionals tell us that not only is it important to look at the community health measures, but we should also consider the effectiveness of our safety protocols in schools. So this information is from the Ohio Department of Health COVID School Dashboard. And so looking at just Hamilton County, last week, there were 47 new student cases and 63 new staff cases in public schools, and that's out of 114,000 students. We have also added the data for charter schools and private schools as they are also required to report their cases to the state. Now, we are working on how to take these raw case counts and add more context. For example, how many cases in schools per 100,000 individuals? How many cases in schools per the number of in-person learning days? And how many of our positive cases were due to exposure to COVID at school? And the new National COVID Response Dashboard has started to present some of this context with the data they are collecting. And so we're specifically beginning to be able to dig into that data and compare the school rates of COVID cases to the overall community rates. On the next slide, so for CPS-specific COVID counts, Susan Bunty, Margaret Hall, and Cynthia Egbalnia have been working tirelessly to make sure that we have a system that can rapidly respond to individuals who are ill or exposed or identified as positive. And since we have started blended learning three weeks ago at CPS, we have 32 confirmed student cases, 600 isolated students, and 398 students who were tested through our children's hospital procedures. That is out of over 31,000 students who are attending in person. The confirmed staff cases is 47 since we started blended learning, out of almost 6,000 staff members. And we have had to switch six classrooms to distance learning because of a confirmed case. And those are typically specialized classrooms, preschool classrooms, or kindergarten classrooms, which we are following our procedures. When there are challenges to ensuring that six-foot distancing was followed at all times, then that would call for a switch to distance learning. So again, we're working on how to take this raw data and add some additional context so that we can consider this alongside the community health data. Tonight, we also wanted to add an update on the next slide, an update on student attendance. So what you are seeing on the left is the district attendance rate overall, which would include students who are attending both blended learning and students who are attending through distance learning only. On the right-hand side, you will see students who were attending blended learning, either the A group or the B group last week, and what their percentage attendance was. And so we do see that student attendance has been affected, and we believe that is in part due to the community health data. And now we will switch the presentation or continue the presentation on the blended learning update.
Thank you Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, and Board, and Sarah Trumbull Oliver. The work we are presenting on tonight ladders up to these three measures under student-centered decision-making. Measurable and ambitious academic goals, as well as how we are reducing the learning gaps in ELA and mathematics, specifically with our English language learners and students with disabilities. We have three key messages. Although we are currently in a blended learning format of instruction, we have worked to create a model that can quickly shift, if needed, between distance, blended, and hopefully someday soon, face-to-face. We must hold one another accountable in seeing the child behind every number and creating personalized plans to accelerate their learning. And we cannot do this alone. Alone, we are smart, but together, we're brilliant. To begin, we would like to express our profound gratitude to our Cincinnati Public Schools educators, impacting the lives of students daily. What you see in front of you is a subset of those who have worked hard to level up in our newly launched Distinguished Educator Program. As of today, 2,642 teachers and principals have completed Stage 1, and 611 teachers and principals have leveled up to Stage 2. The Distinguished Educator Program, broken into four stages, was designed in response to educators expressing a need for more PD regarding blended learning best practice. Beginning with building relationships first, we focus on content, pedagogy, and technology to promote accelerated learning through equitable instruction in blended learning environments. Everything that we do is geared towards educating our students regardless of circumstances. Last time we were with you, we focused on Call to Action 1, finding new ways our students can see themselves in other cultures in their learning. The equity and anti-racist work are critical to disrupt the system and must be done in conjunction with Calls to Action 2 and 3. As an educational system, we must strive to do these things day by day, week by week, no matter if we are in face-to-face, blended, or distance. This is difficult work. During a pandemic, it is even more difficult. However, the late Senator John Lewis inspires us with his message, "If not us, then who? And if not now, then when?" Our KDD outlines our overall theory of change. Our goals and aims on the left articulate how we will know we are successful. In the middle are our key drivers that we collaborated with teachers and principals, identifying the conditions we believe need to be in place to reach our goals. The first set, we collaborated with principals and teachers. And the second, we believe as a department, that we must focus on to accelerate learning for each child to decrease the learning loss due to COVID-19. The projects to the right are those spaces we are actively testing and learning in order to build a system where every child succeeds. Lenisha Simmons, our 712 ELA manager, and Bridgette McComas, our curriculum manager of diverse learners, will share why and how we are building a system to accelerate learning. And you're also here from teachers today about what this looks and feels like in the classroom.
Thank you, Emily, and good evening. So as an institution for learning, our number-one job is to educate regardless of circumstances. So why accelerated learning? Due to the pandemic, a light has been shining brightly on the inequities within our system. We knew that learning loss was inevitable for our students. Many studies, including a study from the New Teacher Project, stated that students would experience a learning loss of 30% in reading and 50% in math as a result of the crisis. To be able to support our students through this, going back to business as usual was not an option for curriculum and instruction. To address inequities head-on and ready our students for grade-level learning, we are focusing on accelerating learning rather than remediating. Research shows remediation could actually create more inequities for our students and increase their likelihood of not mastering grade-level work and grade-level content. Unbound Ed's number-one charge to begin addressing educational inequities is to adopt aligned, high-quality curriculums. So we would like to say thank you to the board for making accelerated learning possible for our students. Because of your leadership, your support, and your vision, our teachers are able to utilize our adopted curriculums and keep the focus on providing strong instruction to grow students. So to move this work forward, the CNI Department created the Accelerated Learning Guide. In creating this guide, we were aware of the importance to ensure that the components were agile and could be adaptable and transferred to any environment, whether we are distant or blended. The four components to accelerate learning are: number one, building a community of equity and excellence; number two, engage students in grade-level instruction regardless of circumstances; number three, collect and provide feedback; and number four, plan to address unfinished learning, which are skills students haven't mastered yet, scaffold and enrich, and monitor your students' progress. So we are excited to celebrate teachers who have implemented these components in their classroom. We're going to show you a somewhat short video that's going to highlight these components and what teachers have done with them in their classrooms.
I've been able to create a community of equity and excellence within my classroom by utilizing the SchoolAGI platform as a way to administer our open physical education and ETR house smart curriculum. This enables every student to have access to the same materials, whether we are in distance learning, our AB cohorts, or for students and families who chose to stay fully remote. I'm hoping that this consistency has helped both students and their families find success during the uncertainty of the school year so far.
I am able to create excellence and equity in my classroom by going the extra mile for my students. If they do not have access to internet, I have sent parents packets. I have sent text messages so that students are able to still get access to all of the materials that we use in class. Students are able to dial into Google Meets. Students are able to call into Google Meets. Students who struggle with doing their work independently are able to come to my office hours and ask for help. I am able to communicate when students are doing well, and I'm also able to target those students who need a little extra help. I recognize my students for their excellence, and I help them succeed in all areas.
The way that we create the community of equity, especially during these challenging times, we have to be super aware of the challenges that our students and their families face. We realize that they've got a lack of internet, that they may have a deficit in knowing technological skills. We have to be super cognizant of them, the families losing their jobs during these times. So being an advocate for them is really important by providing those contacts and resources that could be of benefit to them. Not only equally acknowledging, but valuing those efforts of all of the students in our classroom regardless of race and gender is super important. We're using an app at Withrow called Talking Points, and that's been really helpful. It was piloted last year at AWL, and it gives us a chance to communicate with all of those families in their native language. I think in order to create that strong sense of community, whether it be face-to-face or online, it's really important for us to be flexible as educators and make sure that we're really guiding those students. We should still have high expectations and rigor, but of course, it needs to be coupled with compassion and equity.
This year, more than ever for me, it's important that our students have access to grade-level appropriate work. However, it is a reality we had to face that some of our students may have some unfinished learning from last school year. So it was important that I took an asset-based approach instead of a deficit approach so that we could tap into students' prior knowledge, talk about their self-efficacy skills, and really see what skills they did and did not master by the end of last school year. So it was important to use strategies that would focus on that unfinished learning. We use things like PairDeck and Vocabulary.com, also the skills lessons on ThinkCirca. And one of the things that was most important to our learning, especially while remote, was the use of the Google breakout rooms. My co-teacher and I were really successful at helping students where they were and then getting them where they needed to be so that by the time we returned to school the second quarter, we could really put more of a focus on the critical aspects of grade-level work for this year. So even though this year has brought a lot of new challenges, we have really tried to implement some of these strategies, using technology and not, to build a sense of community, help students believe in themselves even if they did have some unfinished learning, and really set them up for success for the rest of the school year.
And giving them coping mechanisms to access any curriculum. We are exposed to the same books, the same texts, and the same curriculum as their peers. A lot of read aloud, so maybe they can't read it independently, but they can listen. A lot of scaffolding. And then we read different texts at their level that are high interest that link directly with those standards.
I have had to really step up my instructional game this year with students coming in. Sometimes they look really sleepy and they're not very engaged. And so I've had to be creative in the way that I motivate them to come to class to see what wacky thing might happen and also just kind of keep it fresh. So some of the things I do when we're studying observation, we would do video on, video off. When they would turn their video camera off, or when I'd turn mine off, I would come back and I'd have something ridiculous on like this, and they would have to write down what changed, make observations, scientific observations about that. Other things I would use is I would use, I leaned heavily on our Discovery Ed textbook. It's been very helpful for these days where I'm not in class with them and they're doing self-guided learning. So that's been helpful. And I've also had to pull from my resources just from teaching science years past and making sure that when they are in class with me, we are doing some hands-on activities. With our smaller class size, I've really been able to, I have the supplies that I can do that without having to share equipment. And so the class sizes have really led themselves to being able to accommodate not being able to share tools and such.
It's been very challenging for our students to do assignments on the computer, but they have found it easier when I link them to Google Docs and SchoolAGI because we're able to actually view the same assignment at the same time, and I can provide them real-time feedback on what they're doing to make sure that they're on track before they go out on their own for the rest of the days to complete the work. It's been very helpful, and it's been a really great way to be able to communicate with the kids in this distance and blended learning time.
In regards to feedback given during blended and distance learning, it's very important that students have the opportunity to share their ideas, thoughts, and reflections. Several students have messaged me during the day, even time, and even on weekends so they're able to get their best work. I actually use auto-graded assessments as well as teacher-generated assessments. And it's not just a grade that is important to them. They like seeing the responses in Spanish as well as English and suggestions that they received. So I think it's very crucial that students be able to give feedback that is returned in a reasonable time, maybe 24 to 48 hours, so they can assess how well they are doing and see what they need to improve. So feedback is very crucial. It's important whether it be distance, in-person, or in the blended model. Students want to hear back from the teachers, so they are given that input so they can better improve their education. And also, it sets up community with the teachers, not just receiving a grade in Power School. It develops a type of relationship that you probably would not have otherwise if you just gave the student a grade in Power School and that was it.
One instructional strategy that I've used during this blended learning time to sort of meet kids where they are, I've used a couple, but I think technology is the number-one tool that I've used. And so I wanted to be able to give kids real-time feedback despite the fact that I wasn't going to be with them. And so I'm doing that through my use of PairDeck, which is an instructional tool that allows me to gain data as kids answer questions, and then they get that feedback in real time. Also, something that I do for my English language learners, we have a lot of students who are not on grade level with their English communication skills. And so through the use of SchoolAGI and the assignments being on Google Docs, it gives kids an option to translate the document into their native language, and then they can respond in that language, and I can translate it back to English for better feedback to them.
PairDeck allows the students or the audience to engage and interact in a variety of ways. So PairDeck, when I work
So, Pairdeck, when I work with my students, I have, I'm able, because of the power of Pairdeck, I can create a lesson, and I can differentiate that lesson for different levels of students within Pairdeck, but I can also differentiate it to address specific learner needs. So, a student who might express themselves better by drawing an answer or illustrating an answer, they can illustrate an answer. Students that need to type or put answers in that are numerical, you have so much variety in how to use Pairdeck. So, Pairdeck is a really great tool. I love it. I can't imagine not using it now with my teaching and being able to differentiate and reach students no matter where they are, whether they're in-person or remote.
I implemented several writing strategies during lessons, so that 100% of my students would meet proficiency on a wit and wisdom question set with the short-answer portion of that. The students in my small groups knew the goal that we were working towards from the very beginning, and also, they had individual run charts where they could keep track of their individual progress towards their own individual goals as well. After each data point was collected on the class run chart, we would discuss pluses and deltas of what helped them meet that goal or what didn't help them meet that goal.
All right, so as you can see, our teachers are doing some amazing things in this distance and blended learning model, and so we want to shout out all the amazing teachers who participated in that video. We do truly appreciate them. So, within our work to accelerate learning, we are engaging our field and our teachers in building what we call two-week cycles of learning. This supports, again, the need to be agile. These cycles allow us to focus on quality of learning rather than quantity of learning. Teachers are able to look at what they want their students to master by the end of this two-week cycle, and then they can identify the prerequisite knowledge that is necessary for students to access that on-grade level, to access that on-grade level work and continue growing. Next, Bridgette is going to share how the Curriculum and Instruction Department and the Department of Student Services has been collaborating to ensure that our diverse learners are getting what they need as well.
Thank you, Lenisha, and thank you to the board. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about how we have supported our educators through this blended and distance learning environment. The first layer of support came in the creation of educator guides by both of our departments. First, it was the Accelerated Learning Educator's Guide created by the Department of Curriculum Instruction to define accelerated learning. Then a companion guide was created for blended learning by Department of Student Services to bring in those layers that we know we need for all of our diverse learners. These include safety and guidance for specialized classrooms, specific guidance including teaching and learning links to online resources, planning guidance through schedules and teaming, guidance on compliance, and guidance on delivery of services. The second layer was continued professional learning opportunities. We were gifted with allocated time with our educators to support professional learning and additional opportunities for office hours with each of our content area managers. This table shows the results from our October 26th allocated PD time. You can gather that half of the participants, actually greater than half of the participants, identified that their level of skill or knowledge after the learning was excellent or very good at the end of the session. Additionally, nearly 90% of the participants identified that they had an actionable step to bring back to their teaching practice as a result of attending a learning session. We thank the 1,137 educators who filled out exit tickets for the 34 professional learning opportunities offered during this time. An additional layer of support is considering our students with disabilities. We've taken into account for three groups of diverse learners. The first I would like to speak with you about are those students with disabilities. As you know, the majority of our students with disabilities are able to continue to receive accommodations, modifications, and supports in the same learning environment as their peers. Our educators support them in blended and distance environments through intervention specialists, related services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, VIHI. Additionally, students in specialized classrooms attend in-person four days per week with a 1-4 schedule. Looking at differentiated needs, our IEP teams coordinate with families to determine if there is a need for additional recovery services. We also consider our English learners. This was abundant in the teacher videos. Our English learners continue to receive supports and accommodations as outlined in their limited English proficiency plans, and students with limited or interrupted formal education or are SLIF students attend four days per week to further support their accelerated learning. Lastly, I'd like to speak with you about our considerations that support gifted learners. Our gifted learners are supported through academic enrichment. Gifted intervention specialists share resources with general education teacher teams through professional development and provide supports to students on at-home days. Our buildings can request and gain academic enrichment resources if they need them. Now, I'm going to bring Lenisha back to speak with you about some generous opportunities through the Wade Foundation.
Okay, thank you, Bridgette. So, as we spoke about the three key messages, the last one being community and collaboration, we understand that we cannot do all of this work with our students in isolation, that community partnerships are crucial to moving this work forward. So, our science PE and health manager, Liz Wood, has been partnering with the Wade Foundation, also known as the Newport Aquarium, and they have been working to envision and create cross-curricular and engaging School of D courses for our primary students. One thing we heard over and over again in the spring from families was the importance of having a common launchpad for instruction. So, the K3 Wade School of D course is a great example of making this happen for our families and students. The course covers every single standard through, from kindergarten through third grade, every single science standard, from kindergarten through third grade. And this partnership is aligned to our Every Child Reads project, because we absolutely understand that building oral vocabulary and background knowledge is an essential component of our first graders' learning to read. And this is just one example of how this is aligned to our projects in our department and is focusing on accelerating learning for our students. In the School of D course, we have teachers from various grade levels and content areas who are utilizing these School of D courses from the Wade Foundation. We have hosted many feedback sessions regarding how we have helped to translate this curriculum into School of D. So, the examples that you see are some feedback that teachers gave in regards to these School of D courses in this partnership. One of the videos from the aquarium is of a starfish eating. When we reviewed the data, we noticed that it was viewed by 108% of the time, and we wondered, well, how can it be viewed 108% of the time? Well, when we looked dug deeper into the data, we noticed that students were watching the video more than once. So, we were excited to see that, because that let us know that the content is engaging and user-friendly for our K3 learners. And we're going to continue to get feedback from our teachers and students regarding the ease and use of this course and continue to improve it throughout the school year. This partnership with the Wade Foundation has allowed for cross-curricular connections, so when students log in, they can see realistic fiction, they can see science videos, they have the opportunity to do math. So, this partnership has truly been a benefit for our students, and we hope to continue it in the future. So, again, thank you to the Wade Foundation and the Newport Aquarium for supporting our K3 learners. Now, Dr. Hall will share our next steps.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us come here. Thank you, Bridgette, Lenisha, and Emily, for a great job of explaining everything that we've been going on. Everybody asks what's next. So, as we all know, teachers are the number-one impact on students, and our principals are the number-one impact on our teachers. So, our primary focus has been providing supports for both teachers and principals so they can have a successful year. We do this really in three ways. First, we want to make sure that all the hard work everyone is doing is having an impact on student achievement. The way that we do this is to continue to provide support for our principals and teachers. Some examples of this are synchronous and asynchronous PD. You've heard about that, you heard some of that in the presentation. Office hours, multiple learning guides, you have an example of one in front of you this evening. Finally, we will improve and refine our communication practices through a variety of ways we communicate with newsletters, websites, School of D, email, text messages, department meetings through Google Meets, office hours, and then you saw in the KDD how communication is a part of that as well. So, I want to thank everybody for letting us have the opportunity to come here and know that we continue to strive for always for more for our students, our teachers, and our principals. Thank you to the board for your attention this evening and for letting us present this amazing information.
Oh, happy day. I am so excited to be here to do the introduction for the West Side expansion. I'm going to open with where we were and where we are headed. There is rich history on the West Side. So, Western Hills is an historic building that opened in 1928. There was a university focus, but had very few pre-AP and honors courses. There was some career tech opportunities, but lacked a foundation for prerequisite courses. In 1970, the Annex was built, and we started with the Walnut West Side program with less than 40 students. CTE courses were not open to both campuses. Now, today, and I have a tribe of folks with me, going to share where we're going. But our lens was around equity and opportunity. All students, regardless of circumstance, will succeed at high levels. And we looked at the safety of Dater and West Campus, making sure we had balanced enrollment and high-quality facilities. We took a look at college career pathways for honors ID for all at Dater, and then we also talked to the staff at Robert's, so we can start a feeder program, and then global learning with expanded languages. Listed in front of you are all the wonderful tribe members who will present today along with student videos. So, now up, who have really led this process, is Dr. Dean Blaze.
Thank you, Deputy Amat, and thank you, Cincinnati Board of Education. It is so wonderful to be here tonight. I have learned over the past year as the Director of School Leadership on the West Side that there is a lot of passion on the West Side, and these three schools have brought with them enormous heart, enormous passion, lots of debate, lots of discussion, and always with a drive to do what's best for kids. We have put a ton of hard work into this project, and there's just been enormous collaboration. So, I'm going to start here tonight with one of the most fundamental sort of common-sense pieces that we confronted when we got together, but what you're going to hear from the remainder of our presenters is how much collaboration went into this piece. We worked with members of the College and Technical Career Program, the Curriculum Department, administrators at all three schools, human resources, facilities, the ILTs at all schools, the faculties, and the Office of Community Engagement, to get all of this to come together during a pandemic to do what's best for kids. So, what you see here, let me orient you to this slide, is where we were about a year ago. We had about 1,300 students enrolled at Dater and just about 1,000 students at West High, but the instructional spaces were out of whack. So, we must have walked those buildings 100 times or more to figure this all out, but what it boiled down to is we were out of balance. So, with the, again, lots of collaboration, we were able to bring that into balance this year by, through controlling enrollment at the early grades, increasing programs and increasing opportunities at West High, so we can start to build this back up towards what just frankly makes sense. But the real fun comes with what these fabulous people have been working on. So, I'm going to introduce Dr. Blair, the Principal of Western Hills.
Hello, Western Hills, I'm sorry. Hello, Western Hills, is excited to be here today. First, I wanted to say hello to the board members, senior officials, parents, and community members. First, I would like to say congratulations on passing the levy. In troubling times like this we're in, this is not a small endeavor. Thank you for the opportunity to share the positive things that are going on at Western Hills University High School. There is plenty to celebrate at West High. For example, Western Hills' four-year graduation rate increased from 73.4% to 75.6%. Our five-year graduation rate increased from 69.9% to 81.8%. This year, we're working to expand our public safety program in addition to our academic programs. We have two retired firefighters who are passionate about working with youth. Mr. James Donegan is entering his second year as an instructor at Western Hills University High School. Mr. Willie Jones was added this school year. Both have been value assets to our public safety program. The fire program areas prepare students for careers in the fire and medical service. Students will gain the necessary technical and academic skills to prevent, respond, and rescue people and property in fire or medical emergency. Students currently in this course are taking foundations for public safety, firefighting, medical terminology, health credentials, et cetera. My public safety team, consisting of teachers and district staff, are working to solidify a course progression. This form will help map out the particular courses needed for students to career, to complete their career pathways. Western Hills is expanding accelerated courses as well, starting with junior high students, junior high school students, excuse me. Per the chart, our student population is going to have more chances to engage in very rigorous coursework. Next, Ms. Elizabeth Ho will discuss our accelerated courses.
Good afternoon. I've been an English teacher at Western Hills for the past 33 years, and I'm also the senior team leader, and I'd like to speak just very briefly from a teacher's perspective about the expansion of accelerated courses at Western Hills. AA, AP, and CCP courses are not new to West High. In fact, we were the first CPS school to offer CCP courses. They were then called dual enrollment back in the year 2001. We pursued this opportunity for students to earn college credits while in high school, because we knew then, as we know now, that our students are very capable, and they deserve the opportunity to be challenged. What we're excited about now is the expansion of these programs and the renewed focus on acceleration at West High. We've added AA courses this year at the middle school level, as well as increasing our AA and AP and CCP courses at the high school level. Our focus is not so much on identifying students who can rise to the challenge, but rather on developing students who can. Our students are quite capable, but they need to know that they are, and they need supports to reach high standards. To that end, we've already developed several professional development sessions for our teachers. Earlier this year, the middle school teachers participated in a workshop facilitated by Craig Hoover and myself. Also, our English- Also, our English department recently participated in a PD centered around ELA-specific assignments and grading practices as they relate to accelerated courses. Without a doubt, this initiative will strengthen the academic focus of all of our teachers and by extension, the academic preparation of all of our students. When expectations are raised for one group, there's no question that standards will go up for all. And I'd like to introduce our next speaker is Mr. Byrd, who will give an overview of the Middle Years Program.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I am the IB Coordinator for Roberts Academy and Dater High School's International Baccalaureate Program. This year has been challenging. Despite this, we are pressing forward enthusiastically with our Middle Years Program partnership. Unlike typical advanced placement programs, this program aims to provide an authentic, relevant, and rigorous education for all, including students with disabilities, English language learners, and gifted students. Some of the changes that we've been able to implement are adding two languages at the middle school level, French and Spanish, and an IB design course. As our program evolves, we will be adding community and personal projects at the ninth and 10th grade levels. Our hope is that these classes, as well as the community service and many other aspects of the program, will better prepare our students for high school, college, and beyond. Please enjoy as three of our students explained what the new IB design program means to them.
I go to Dater High School.
Hi, my name is Renai. I go to IB Design at Dater High School, grade eight.
Hello, my name is Adrian Challenger. I am a student at Dater High School. Design is important to me and I can use it in ways such as when I'm doing a project, even using designs that go to evaluate what steps you can use and like how you use it. For example, when you inquire analyzing, you want to use all the information in design to build up which way you're going towards your project and what you're mainly using it for.
One thing that I enjoy with taking IB Design is how it's going to affect me in the future and how I can better engage in projects at school.
Personally, I am excited in IB Design to actually use it to my daily life.
One thing that I'll also help me with in the future is make sure I'm on the right track and getting everything done.
IB Design because it's helping me for my future. Like I own a business, so it's going to help me to create whatever I need when I go to college or high school and like certain steps like in brain analyzing, taking little things that I've learned now on up until 12th grade. It's just going to help me to evaluate my problems, to figure out different solutions. And once I get my solution, I'm safe.
Hello, I'm Tanya Boyle. I am a French teacher in the IB Middle Years Program at Dater. In the spring of 2020, leadership prepared and submitted the application for the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program candidate card. During the summer, administration and most teachers participated in a month-long professional development workshop where we learned how to put together entire IB-style lessons, complete with statements of inquiry, different approaches to learning, and authentic, real-world assessment. Finally, this past fall, the IB Middle Years Program was launched at Roberts in grade six through eight and at Dater for grade seven through eight for approximately 500 students. And on a personal note, I want to say that I was an IB student and I know how it changes lives. And I'd like to introduce now Mr. Alpatino Bochamp, Principal at Roberts Academy.
Thank you. French teacher who says my name correctly. Don't tell my dad. Well, good evening, Board of Education, Treasurer Wagner, Superintendent Mitchell. And again, I want to be very proud and appreciative of all the work to pass this CPS levy. What a great accomplishment that is for all of us. I'm also proud to represent Roberts Academy as the principal here, and thank you for having us to share our progress with the International Baccalaureate Program. As a Vision 2024.0 school, it was our, it was a natural fit for us to look at the International Baccalaureate Programs as an academic complement to our current daily instruction. When we began working with Dater High School, I found a collection of committed educators who were willing to engage in learning and implementing the International Baccalaureate Program across disciplines as well as across campuses. At Roberts Academy, we began in the middle school and we look to expand all the way down throughout the whole school. Frankly, I believe that this will be pivotal for us to be able to redesign what the West Side of Cincinnati looks like and feels like with regards to rigorous preparation for our students. So at this point, I'll have Mr. Jerry Moore, the Assistant Principal at Dater High School, going to come up.
Thanks, Mr. Bochamp. I'm joined over here by the interim principal, Ms. Jasmine Madison at Dater. The rigor and focus on inquiring knowledgeable and caring young people who helps create a better, more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect was a draw for Dater as well. The collaboration of the two school staffs modeled a future of cooperation between students in both schools. Our group, composed of members from both staffs, created a framework of cooperation and organization as well as identifying our IB coordinator who works at both schools, developing IB practices and strategies. As you can see by the slide, we will add a grade of international baccalaureate curriculum each year to Dater until we graduate our first IB class in 2024, which is our current eighth graders, and those are all the ones that you saw on the video. I would like to introduce you to Sarah Morales, who's the Curriculum Manager for World Languages to continue our presentation.
Good evening. I'm excited to speak to all of you about how more students on the West Side are becoming world influencers through studying world languages. Anyone who speaks a language has the capacity to learn other languages when given the opportunity and exposure to acquire them. When we're talking about language acquisition in the classroom, we need to provide as much time as possible for students to reach their highest potential, so starting early is very important. For our native English speakers, this means starting by the seventh grade. For our students who are already speaking another language, our heritage speakers, this means viewing their language knowledge as an asset and placing them in courses that honor their existing language strengths and challenge them to hone their academic language and literacy skills in their home language. Our English learners and other heritage language speakers are given the opportunity to place into the level of world languages courses that meet their needs. For our students with interrupted education or SLIF, this may be basic literacy in Spanish that reinforces and supports the literacy and academic skills they're building in English. For our students with strong academic backgrounds, they may place directly into AP or CCP world language courses. No matter the entry point, all students would have the opportunity to take AP Spanish or French in the 11th or 12th grade after completing the third and fourth level courses. Demand for heritage language courses is high, and we hope to expand offerings to meet this demand and maximize opportunities for these students. Now I'd like to introduce Ms. Johanna Frolicar of Roberts, who's going to share with you the experience of one of her former students, who started out in their SLIF program, has become fully bilingual, and is eligible for AP Spanish as a ninth grader.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Proficiency in other languages has become an essential skill in our ever-changing and interconnected world. This skill allows one to engage with others and the surrounding world in more meaningful ways, whether in our classrooms, communities, or beyond, while simultaneously helping to better prepare one to thrive in a global economy. One of the advantages of exploring and implementing the Middle Years Program is that our students will have access to learning either Spanish or French, generating more opportunities both personally and professionally. Recently, I had the privilege of catching up with one of my former students, Hector David Oliva, who is now a freshman at Western Hills. When David first came to us in the fifth grade, he was only speaking Spanish. This year, as a ninth grader, David will be enrolling in a virtual AP Spanish course. David shared his experience learning English as a second language and how it has been informative and making him a more understanding, empathetic person. Because of this, David would ultimately like to give back to the community and assist others with their learning of another language and could potentially participate in programs through our partnerships with the University of Cincinnati, Cincinnati State, and Cincinnati Children's Hospital, where he could act as an official translator. Here, I would like to share David's enthusiasm with you in this video of our conversation from last week.
I'm Hector David Oliva. I'm a ninth grader at West High University High School, and I am a proud bilingual speaker. It was a good time, although I didn't understand English. But you know, I have people that they helped me translate for me all that stuff. I was scared to get judged, obviously. Yeah, but it had, it does help me at least because now with me knowing two languages, if I don't understand something, obviously in English, I could just go to someone older and I just translate it to them in Spanish. So that helps me so I can get help from both sides, you know? Since I know both languages, I'm able to communicate with people from both sides, you know? I can communicate in Spanish, communicate in English. Sometimes I communicate in both languages at the same time with some of my friends. Helps me because like I'm able to communicate with more people around me. One, it has helped me on not judging people. I can't judge somebody for not knowing English when I've been there. Let's say you go to a job like me. At the store I work at, it's either Hispanic or American, either one of those two. And you know, so I have to, me knowing both languages really helps at the store because like I can do stuff that I need English for and then also in Spanish. One thing I would like to do though is like help people that don't speak, but it kind of be like an interpreter.
Nice job and thanks for being here. So really, as you can see, there are a lot of moving parts, but at its core, this is a very simple proposition. We realized that there were some inequities and things that we could do better on the West Side of town so that every kid over there has, you know, the same access to whatever strengths and brightness they want to bring into the world. So that is that. We are here and available to answer any questions that you might have. So let's go.
Okay, well, thank you. Looks, it looks like everyone hung around for the board's questions or comments, and we'll open it up for board comments or questions. Mr. Messer.
So I'm going to speak to the, to kind of both presentations. I have to say, this is probably my favorite board meeting to date of board presentations. You know, I think the first part on kind of the update in our learning model, you know, what I thought about is life is 1% what happens and 99% how we respond. And I absolutely feel like this was textbook and people coming together, leveraging our expertise, hearing from our teachers, a couple I sent texts to that I was so proud to see them on there, that really showed that there was nothing they weren't going to let stand between them and making their children successful. And I am so proud of this district and everything I heard in that presentation. And then as it relates to this group, I mean, the, just the kind of all-encompassing one-team approach, I heard collaboration, I heard synergy, all these things. That's exactly what makes for a successful group. Clearly, you created something that was greater than what we could achieve alone. And, you know, I think we're really setting things up just to be so fantastic on the West Side and just this, this is the thing that's come to fruition is just so wonderful. And the only little plug I'll put in, we have a little special school that I have a little special place in my heart for, and that's Leap Academy, and they are so multicultural. And when I engaged one time in a classroom there and the one little boy translated because I asked the one how he was and they translated, then he brought it back. They said, well, we have to be bilingual here because we have to take care of our fellow students. And I was blown away by that. But I'd love to see them kind of blend it in because they're a natural part of this West Side cohort. So thank you for your incredible work today. I'm so proud.
Thank you. Ms. Fowers.
Yes, I'm just as excited as Board Member Messer in to piggyback off of some of the things he said, just some key points that stuck out for me. I saw, I heard the equitable approach, and I love that from the first group who spoke more about blended learning update. And I like the term unfinished business, but I heard asset-based focus, not focusing on what they were, you know, a student was, was missing, but seeing where they stopped and starting where they were to bridge those gaps. In addition to the creativity, kudos to all of our teachers that I saw in the video. The teachers, the, during unprecedented times, I heard one teacher, which I know, said to she, some students emailed her on the weekend, the accessibility and the, the ability to be agile. I heard that several times through one of the presenters right there. She said agile, which is a term that we've been using. And understanding, it gave me a different viewpoint on understanding what is required of our teachers during these times and how they are going over and beyond what is expected regularly. So that's, that's huge. And then I liked the one teacher who mentioned about catering to the different learning styles. That was excellent. And she used the term, there's a mechanism, Paradox. Did I say that right? I like Paradox because when I was in school, I had a different learning style that people didn't understand. And so when I heard they said you can use the drawings or what have you to help the student to get to the same point as others. And for the West Side expansion, I'm always excited about that. I love the balancing out of the enrollments to help with the safety and security. That was very good. And then to hear about the AA, Advanced Accelerated Academics or Advanced Academics, however you say it, are pre-AP classes. In student achievement, we've always talked about trying to roll them back even to the fifth and sixth grade in preparation of them not only taking the course, but increasing the number of students who will pass the AP exams. And then sometimes that's a barrier for us right now. So just hearing that our seventh and eighth graders at Dater, maybe some seventh and eighth graders at Roberts, and even rolling back to fifth and sixth can also have some of that accessibility. And French and Spanish, I just think that's great to have that in middle school. So kudos to both teams, and it was very good information. Hey, Mr. Byrd.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton and then Mr. Morosky.
Thank you very much for all the presentations. Really appreciate it. I felt good about the, the, not the first, the second one, I guess it would be, because there are three. I feel more reassured about the services being provided for our special needs kids and kids on IEP during this COVID experience. I know it's been a tremendously stressful thing for all of our teachers, but most particularly the teachers that provide that kind of service for those children. And it's harder to schedule and have home visits and everything else. So I appreciate being reassured and keep wanting more reassurance. And then this presentation, two things. Forgive me for being a history teacher on this, but you know, I know this started a year or two ago, but in reality, it started almost a decade ago for a West Side plan, for all intents and purposes, because of the crowds, if you will, called enrollment in so many of the buildings on the West Side and the district having to address that. And some people think that's only about Gamble High School or And some people think that's only about Gamble High School or Gamble Montessori. The reality is this board really, and with our particular superintendents thinking about this a lot when we tried to address those issues of overcrowdedness and also developing the Montessori program more fully, this board insisted, and I can remember especially Ms. Bowers, who was then a member of the community, making multiple guest appearances at all of those presentations and advocating for the West Side. I can remember specifically, we said, "We need a West Side plan, not just one school here, one school that are comprehensive." And I, you know, I'm so impressed that indeed this is that plan. And it's the way to do it is to address it strategically. And I'm not surprised that the superintendent and all the other folks that worked on it have come up with it being strategic in such a significant way and addressing the demographics on the West Side. This is great. The other thing I wanted to say, I don't think there's very many places in the United States that are developing or have tried to develop a K-12 IB program. That's pretty unique, as I understand it, and I think that's very, very exciting. It's just remarkable. So to Mr. Messer's point, it probably will spread even more. But as a native Westsider, I'm really proud of what you all are doing. And I think this is so crucial to the West Side development. And not surprisingly, forgive me, Madam President, for taking this much time, I see a direct parallel between what's been happening in the community development, both economic and cultural and social, in the neighborhoods over there with what is happening at CPS as well. So I think this is great. Really impressed.
Thank you. Mr. Marowski.
Thank you, President Jones, and thank you to everyone who presented. I'm going to go as quickly as I can in order of the presentations. The first presentation was, "I remain concerned about the public health ramifications of our students in the buildings. I remain encouraged that the community spread appears to not be happening in our buildings." But I will say that I continue to have an eye on the fact that we do not know what the long-term effects of this virus are on our children, particularly and disproportionately black children, as we're seeing around the country. 11% of all cases in the country are children at this point. And so that's all to say, I'm also encouraged by the fact that we have invested in and are prepared to pivot if and when we have to. I know that the hospitals are full, Children's ICU is getting full, and the Health Commissioner in the county, Mr. Kesterman, is concerned about the overflow in the hospitals. And so as I've been want to do at these meetings, I feel the need to bring that up and express my concern while we are moving forward. I am very grateful that the safety precautions are being followed. It appears they are, and it appears that the spread is not happening in the schools. And so while we have administrators and teachers from the schools here, kudos to all of you for doing that work. I know how hard your job is for being an assistant principal and a teacher, and I can't imagine trying to do it now with all of this. And so thank you. That's the applause I want to give you for doing this while we're able to be in our schools. And to echo Ms. Campbell, hopefully, we can be in our schools safely five days. So if we are ever able to do that, it's going to be because of your work. So thank you. The second presentation was on accelerated learning, which was really, really awesome. I was so excited by it. I wrote expletives on my notes that I will not read out loud, but it was good stuff, is what I'll say. That what I heard over and over and over again, and Ms. Bowers called this out, I would never dare speak for Ms. Bolton, but I'm sure she would share this sentiment. The most exciting thing about the opportunity with this blended, concerns on the shelf for the time being. The thing I heard over and over from the teachers was the ability to differentiate learning among students in some ways seems to be, I don't want to say easier, because that's not it, but manageable with the blended model. And that's really exciting to me. And as I talk about my wife a lot, we have an eight-month-old son, and I keep telling her, I was like, you know, school will never look the same for him. And y'all's students are the ones that are going to be teaching him. It's just interesting to think about that. I'll stop. But if my brain goes down that pathway, that differentiation is really, really awesome. Another piece I heard, and then I'll go to the West Side, is the design thinking. Dr. Blair at Western Hills is so great. I used to give a lot of presentations at UC School of Social Work, and I used to tell the social work students, and they'd get mad at me. And that's okay. People are mad sometimes, but I know well. And I used to tell them that if they wanted to solve a complex issue regarding poverty when they're older, that they should call a designer, not another social worker. And they didn't know what that meant at first, and then I'd walk them back, and eventually they wouldn't be upset. But that design thinking and teaching kids to think that way is a big deal. So those are my kudos. I only have two questions. And this is in regard to the accelerated learning piece. And that is, one, and I think they're pretty simple questions. One is, if kids are doing fully remote right now, and I love that we're accelerating the learning for everybody, not just students with disabilities or students of other languages, but for everybody because they all need it. But if kids are doing fully remote right now, how do they get their questions answered?
So we have, technology has opened the doors to being able to communicate and answer questions. With our remote learning that we are working to schedule at our homeschools, teachers will be able to Google Meet with students and have live sessions. We also have discussion boards on Schoology. Kids can ask and answer questions together. And we also have supports that we are publishing so kids can look at little videos to get help and things like that.
Okay. There's not like a set time? So like if I'm a student and I'm home, do I have like the hours of noon to 1:00 that I can log on and ask questions as of now?
As of now, but we're scheduling that for the homeschools. Scheduled office hours, yep.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Campbell. Thank you. My other one is, the videos of the Wave Foundation, who are super generous people. Newport Aquarium, thank you for your help and love. Not to be down in the weeds, but I look at a lot of social media video data. And I'm curious, we have the 108% for the starfish, which is fantastic. Are those views rated the same way they are on other platforms, i.e. Facebook, where you only have to let it play for two seconds before it counts? And I'm genuinely curious, like, do you have to watch the whole video or at least half of the video for it to count as a watch?
Question, I don't know the answer to it right now, but I can look into it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy.
Thanks, President Jones. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Great. I want to focus on the student learning section. And I think it's easy to see from the presentation tonight that there are incredibly committed educators in CPS who are working just unbelievably hard for students. And so I wanted to start by saying to every single one of you who are here tonight presenting and to those of you who work alongside these folks and can't be here tonight, I wanted to say thank you. To the administration, I did want to express a concern of mine, which I brought up at the last meeting. I do think we need to get clear on a small number of priorities and measurable outcomes for the district and align our conversations on how we're doing on those. When it comes to student learning, it's the third month of the school year, and I'm not sure exactly what our goal is or how we're doing against it. And we haven't talked about that at a board meeting yet this year. I also left the last meeting with the impression that we were going to look at beginning-of-year MAP data today so that we could see how students are doing and how much learning loss we've seen because of COVID. I was a little surprised and a little confused that this wasn't a part of the presentation. Now, the board did receive a really great report on the MAP data by email, which I really appreciated, and so I wanted to talk about it for just a minute. For people who aren't in education and are watching the meeting, the NWA MAP assessment is a really wonderful way to measure student learning. You give it at the beginning, middle, and end of the year, and it shows growth as well as the share of kids on grade level. And you can give it in a whole range of subjects and grade levels. And what was so impressive about the report was that we managed to do that, I think, with a wonderfully large share of kids with what seemed to me pretty reliable results, despite the fact that we were doing it remotely. I think it's great that that information was shared with the board and that it was disaggregated by racial group and by students with special needs. And what blew my mind is we hadn't seen much of a real COVID slide. And that was apparently consistent with what NWA MAP is seeing across the country. So I thought it was full of some good news. I think that the big challenge that I see is we just have an enormous amount of work to do when it comes to the education and provide students of color in CPS. According to the report, at least if I'm reading it correctly, we're preparing only about 20% of our African-American and Latinx students to be on grade level. 20%. And so going forward, I'd like to ask again that we get clear on a small number of priorities and outcomes so that we can prioritize, learn, and hold ourselves accountable for changing those numbers. And another way of saying this might be, I'd like to see us become more outcomes-driven rather than activity-driven when we do presentations with the board. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bates.
Yes, thank you. For all the presentations, they were very, very helpful. I agree with Mr. Messer that this has been one of the best set of presentations we've had this year yet. I have a few questions that I wanted to bring forward. And one is, you know, I like the idea of Roberts being a feeder program. That the more we move towards that, the more efficient our district will be, much like Gamble Montessori is a feeder for Gamble High School. But do we have plans yet for feeder programs at other West Side schools such as Westwood and Carson Elementarys? And that's my first question, and then I'll ask the second one, so you can kind of prepare for that. Sailor Park has always been a concern because it's been pretty common for the students at Sailor Park to move to Three Rivers under open enrollment. They just have never felt, and that's what I have heard from them, from the community members, they have not felt that that was, that West High is really their school. So have we worked with that community as well in the West Side plan?
Sure. So to the first question, this is actually just a small portion of what we're actually doing on the West Side. There's a whole next set of opportunities in the career and college education programming. And what we will begin to do next, and we actually have Mike Turner on the phone if we have specific questions for him. But what we would hope to do is to identify CTE pathways or career and college pathways that can draw from the various programs, Vision 2020 programs. For example, Westwood has an entrepreneurship focus that could easily feed into something in business or entrepreneurship at the high school. Kids can get credentialed and take courses that way. And there's all kinds of examples of that in technology and across the board. So that is definitely a part of what we're looking at when we look at feasibility of expanding programs. We do understand that people who live on the West Side love the West Side. I'm married in, I'm not from there, but we get that. And so we want to make sure that if you're a kid on the West Side, if you're a family on the West Side, you can see a clear through line all the way up through graduation and beyond. To the second question about Sailor Park, Sailor Park and Roberts are actually part of the same program through AT&amp;T and Verizon. And we are definitely in active communication about what it might look like for those students to continue their project-based learning. Again, that's something that could continue at either West High or through the design programs at the International Baccalaureate Program.
Okay. All right. So I get to close. And considering that today is a great day, okay? I want to keep it light. My colleagues took care of all the serious stuff. So people are going to laugh at me, but I'm going to step out there because I ain't scared, okay? Parlez-vous français? Parlez-vous français? Okay, because I can't hear. Je parle un peu. Un peu? Uh huh, fooled y'all, didn't I? Un peu? Excusez-moi un peu, okay?
Oui, madame, je peux vous aider?
Now I'm having a hard time here, okay?
Oui, madame, je peux vous aider?
Yeah, parlez-vous français?
Oui, je parle français.
Okay. Qu'est-ce que c'est, years?
En, en est, oui. Que vous dire, years en français? On peut dire, en ou en est?
Okay, I'm still having a hard time, but I'm going to take a shot at it. Je parle français six ans.
En, oui.
En est. At Hughes High School.
Ah, c'était excellent, oui.
At Hughes High School in at UC.
Oui, à l'Université de Cincinnati, c'était excellent.
University of Cincinnati. Je ne comprends pas a lot.
Beaucoup.
Just un peu. Merci beaucoup.
Oui, et je suis fier de vous, madame.
Thank you all so much. Okay, all right. Just a little fun. Parlez-vous français? Okay. All righty, back to the agenda here. Okay. So we are now at the item on the agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here again are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must make requests through the chat feature, including your full name, affiliation to the district, school, community, and contact information for response to questions. This request models standard practice if we were meeting in person in the ed center. Treasurer Wagner and Daniel Hoing will be our timekeepers. Once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the visibility icon to go interactive. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. How many people? We have five speakers tonight. Our first speaker is a student from Aiken High School. Go ahead, Keyshawn.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Yes, so firstly, hello, my name is Keyshawn Townsend, and I am a Aiken New Tech senior, class 2021. And I really wanted to comment on the blended learning. So over the course of the past three months, I will say, I have struggled, incredibly struggled, being on virtual, and that's mainly due to my mental health at the time. And that is probably one of my main things that I really want to speak on is mental health. When it comes to mental health and this blended learning right now, with COVID and all, it's already chaotic, and there's already a lot of problems. And everybody is frantic and making decisions that they will soon regret later, possibly. And overall, I just want to ask, has anybody like asked if our students are doing okay and how they're handling the situation like personally? And I remember about four years ago, I had a counselor. Her name was Ms. Redding, and she was by far one of my favorite counselors ever. And she was the first person I was going to bring forth my mental issues with. And unfortunately, she was taken away from me because of, I believe there was funding that was cut for counselors, and... that was cut for counselors, and I was unfortunately not able to take care of my mental illnesses until just this month, where I now have a therapist who is helping me both with my education and by far, within this past week of just talking to my therapist, my grades have been increasingly going up. And I really feel like right now, COVID and all, we need to focus on our mental health because when we're in a crisis, we immediately go into flights or fights or flights. And I feel like that's where a lot of decisions are being made right now, is this flight and flight decision-making. And it's causing us to basically panic and realize that none of the issues that we're looking for right now are helping us solve the issue. Like, we're looking for linear solutions when we should be looking for an exponential solution, which is by focusing on our mental health and making sure that every single day that we are in a healthy mindset and ready to burn, and making sure our teachers are also in a healthy mindset and ready to give back to our students because when it comes with teaching.
If you could finish your thought, please. I don't want to cut you off in the middle of your thought, but your time has run out. But if you want to finish your thought, go ahead.
Thank you. And when it comes to a teacher and student relationship, like, it goes both ways. It's not just one way. It's both teacher and student, and we have to make sure that both our teachers and students are in a well-mental health state.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Shike. Go ahead, Hannah.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hannah Shike. I am a mom of three kids at Sands Montessori. We've had to remain remote because of our health issues, and it's hard. I mean, there's really no other way to say it. There's very little communication with the teachers. There's no homework being sent home. I'm creating schoolwork based off what is being put in school ag, but no assignments are being posted. We go into our specials and we click that we're attending, but there's, again, there's no assignments. It would seem easier to be able to leave the district for this year if our spots were able to be kept and then rejoin Sands Montessori next year. Sands is our homeschool. We've been there for five years. It's been great for our kids. Yes, being there for five years means we've, one, one of my sons is about to age out and move on to the next school, but my younger, my youngest is a preschooler. It would make sense also in the long run of our teachers. Our teachers are working overtime to provide a public school in person and a home remote in this blended experience. It's crazy. They're being asked to go above and beyond. And there, it just seems like they're struggling too. Our kids are struggling, our teachers are struggling. We're all asked to work overtime, and I feel like if we had a little bit more of a leeway, we could make it work a little bit better. That's really all I had to say, but it seems silly that there's no way we can retain our spots for our magnet school. And I'm wondering if there's any way exemptions could be made for that.
Okay. If you left your contact information, we'll ask someone to reach out to you to have a conversation. Okay. Next, our next speaker is Jillian Whitaker. Go ahead, Jillian.
Hi, guys. It's me again. I just wanted to start by asking if everyone besides Mike forgot that we were in the middle of a pandemic because it really seemed like it. I'm really frustrated with the way that the data is just getting glossed over. We had 4,000 cases of COVID in Ohio on Monday, and the numbers are just going to keep getting worse after the election yesterday and Halloween last weekend, especially with the flu season and the holidays on the horizon. And while I understand what everyone is saying, that it's imperative that CPS continue to provide education regardless of circumstances, how do you provide this education when your teachers are sick? Or how will your students get to school and get their work done when their parents are sick? If you can't promote the safety of your teachers, stop talking about how great they are. Do something that shows that you're caring about them. They're asked to sit in a classroom full of unmasked students while they take breaks and while they eat lunch. There's not enough bus monitors to make sure that the kids stay masked on the bus, and that also puts our support staff in danger. There's not even enough teachers to come into the classroom every day. Increasingly, studies are showing that asymptomatic people are more and more likely to transmit COVID. CPS has also completely ignored the new definitions released by the CDC that outline the meaning of close contact. I'll go ahead and read it to you just so that everybody knows what the CDC is actually saying, which is that close contact is now defined as someone who's within six feet of an infected person for a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. Additionally, at this time, differential determination of close contact for those using fabric face coverings is not recommended. Meaning, students have questions, they go to the teacher, even if they have a mask on, that should still count as close contact. Parents and staff have to have transparency in regards to exposure. There have been several teachers who have not been informed of student or staff cases in their schools and have had to learn about the diagnosis through teachers, through parents or students, and that is completely unacceptable. Finally, while I'm encouraged that CPS has committed to the remote learners, if this is actually the case, we've heard a lot of rumor and speculation, but nothing was addressed tonight at all. I guess I shouldn't be surprised. However, the learners who would like to move to the remote plan.
I'm sorry. Your time is up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angela Bustamante. Go ahead, Angela.
I'm trying to share my camera, but it's not working. So I just went to, I have a couple things, and I kind of would like maybe some answers. So our virtual plan, I know we're asking a lot of the teachers, but we need daily virtual for our availability to teachers. Our students are struggling, just like the other parent said. They, the teachers, here's why. Teachers are telling remote students that they won't help them. Literally, the teacher told my fourth grader, "I'm sorry, I have been told not to help you or to communicate with you except on Monday. That is not okay." Second, teachers are assigning work to students that are in person and then telling the students, "Do not tell the virtual students and do not help them." This happened at Clark. Okay. That, these two examples literally happened in, like, I heard the other teacher telling my fourth grader, "I cannot help you. I've been instructed to not communicate with you guys except on Mondays." Also, the Google Classroom is better than Schoology, just a side note. Google Classroom's more user-friendly for the students. So if we have to pick one platform, which I love the idea of picking one platform, Google Classroom is more friendly than Schoology for the teachers, for the students. So it's just like planting that seed. You might want to, like, look into that option. And so the last thing that I really wanted to touch on was, so we discussed in the beginning on per-year slides that we've met the Harvard 25 per 100 transmission, and I was wondering, at what point are we going to go back 100% virtual since we're at 28 per 100, like, per your own data?
Okay. If you left your contact information, if you left your contact, okay, we'll ask someone to give you a call.
Yep. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Ms. Julie Sellers. I think she's having some technical challenges trying to accept. Can't get in? Is that what it is?
I've accepted her request and invited her in on two occasions. She must be getting kicked out. Jeremy, can you?
I didn't hear Jeremy. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, we have to move on. Okay. Does anyone have any kudos? Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I would just like to be a kudos to our students of the Speak Up and Speak Out group. One of them was one of our speakers tonight. In partnership with CoHere, the diverse group of our intellectual high school students were able to participate in a conversation with some of our civic leaders this week. And it was a great conversation. They had some great questions. They challenged some of the speakers on why they are involved, what is the, you know, expectation of civic responsibility and engagement. And I just want to say that I think we have a new generation of young people that understand the importance of civil responsibility, and so just look out for them coming up next.
Okay. Thank you. Any other kudos?
Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, thank you. I have four retirements to acknowledge this evening from our civil service personnel, Barbara Banfield, Kathleen Boobler, Ruben Edwards, and Judith M. Mimen. So we thank these professionals for their service to our children and wish them well in this new part of their life.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay. Moving into Board Matters, Mr. Morosky, you asked to present the Board Matters item.
Yes, thank you so much. And also, a repetitive thank you to Ms. Bates and Health and Wellness for their feedback last time, and then also to Ms. Bolton, who I know has been anxious to talk about this and wanted to get it on the agenda tonight as well. So I'll do a quick opening salvo because what I'm interested in is, of course, feedback from members, some of which has been given informally. So it'd be great to have it here done formally for the first time. So a little history, this anti-racism policy was assigned on June 10th. Then a month later, on July 10th, we got a first draft, which is relatively unchanged from the one that's before you. Until very recently, a little over 24 hours ago, there is a red line version that will be presented in Policy Committee on Friday at 3:30 PM. I didn't feel great about knowing it existed without at least having it here. So those of you who have had a chance to look at it, awesome. I know Ms. Bolton has, and she's already given me her notes. But for Mr. Messer and Ms. Bowers, that draft will be presented formally on Friday. And it incorporates feedback, excuse me, from the task force, which is made up of representatives from organizations such as the Urban League and representatives of schools and parents and teachers and folks like this. So that being said, tonight, the main point is to get feedback from everybody. And before we do that, if I may, it's fresh on my mind, as I was walking into our meeting tonight, I was wrapping up a call with the Equity Committee that I'm on at my day job, and we've been undergoing some serious anti-racism training about two and a half years long now. And I just kind of wanted to sort of level set and remind people that this policy, and this is not meant to insult anyone's intelligence watching or on this stage, but for folks who may not be as familiar or don't engage in this work all the time, we're not talking about being mean to people. We're talking about systems and structures. Oftentimes, I think when we get in these conversations, people start saying, "I'm not racist." And so I like to quote Ibram X. Kendi, who says, "There is no such thing as being not racist. You are either racist or anti-racist." The definition that we have in our policy, which I'm just going to read for the edification of the public, is from Dr. Kamara Jones, who I was able to work with a couple years ago. And she says, "It's a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on the social interpretation of how one looks," which is what we call race, "that unfairly disadvantages some individuals and communities, unfairly advantages other individuals and communities, and saps the strength of the whole society through the waste of human resources." That last piece is probably my favorite. And then my last piece of level setting is a definition from the Racial Equity Institute out of North Carolina, who Greater Cincinnati Foundation has brought to Cincinnati on a number of occasions for training. My colleagues and I went through three days of it at the Freedom Center about a year and a half ago, and the definition that they work off of, I just really like it, so I want to share it with everybody. They define it as "a species classification of human beings created during a period of worldwide colonial expansion, using themselves as the model for humanity for the purpose of assigning and maintaining white skin access to power and privilege." And then second piece of that is racism is defined as "social and institutional power combined with race prejudice, is a system of advantage for those considered white and of oppression for those who are not considered white, is a white supremacy system supported by an all-class collaboration called white created to end cross-racial labor solidarity." So thanks to GCF for bringing those folks to town and teaching a lot of us about it. So again, the goal here is to get some feedback on this. It would be nice, even though I don't like to put deadlines on these sorts of things that are this big, it would be nice if we could have a solid draft of this in December's Policy Committee with some board, you know, input this whole month. So I'll just shut my mouth. Thanks for allowing me that time and allow members to say whatever.
Open it up for questions or comments from board members? Sounds like that you've already received some written feedback.
Okay, I got a number, a bunch of written feedback, of course, from Ms. Bolton, and then Health and Wellness. In policy, the first agenda item in policy on Friday is the anti-racism policy with a parenthetical note that doesn't actually appear on the notice, but to talk about the administrative audit of procedure versus policy. Because as Ms. Bates validly brought up, and I've noted a number of it in the red line version, there's a lot of procedural things that are in there that are probably best left out. But of course, ask admin to do it, but I would love everyone's feedback on it. So, or any other feedback, obviously, on either draft. I apologize for throwing a brand new one at you, but again, I just felt weird if I had seen it and nobody else had, so I just wanted everyone to have it.
Well, yes, I thank Mr. Morosky for bringing it forward. Would like to, and glad that Chairman Bates brought it to Health and Safety for good reason. I would just like to remind people to also review the State Board of Education's policy. I know there were a couple of things in there that even appeared in the minutes from Health and Safety. And I think this version, this next draft that Mr. Morosky has brought forward is far better than the first, so that's good. But yeah, it'd be great if people could react to it, you know, whether it's about word choice being a little bit stronger or adamant, or whether it's the procedure piece, that there are some things that really are administrative responsibilities, not board or what have you. And I like the reference to school, student community, student participation, but I think almost every place where we say about students, it's probably, community members have to be involved with that, staff has to be involved with that as well. So I mean, there's several things, but I'll share those further with the Policy Committee. But it's really good to look at both of those or whatever to really come to grips with it. So we have the best and the strongest and the most relevant of anti-racism policies.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and I would also suggest that if we, if the committee could also entertain the resolution that the board passed probably, I don't know, 10 years ago, it's been quite a while, that stated that students shall be given the opportunity for AP coursework because I don't know if the practice still exists, that students have to apply, and they may or may not be given the opportunity based on, you know, some qualifications that are, you know, are determined at the school level, but that was not the intent of the resolution. And that resolution really hadn't been codified into policy. So if we can, if you can get a copy of that and integrate that in this policy as well, I think that would be very, very helpful.
And if I can put a pin in that, and for General Counsel Hoing, if we can... And if I can put a pin in that, and for General Counsel Hoying, if we can dig up that resolution that Ms. Bates is talking about, but also to that end, Ms. Bolton during that piece, if I may, about where we're listing things we had done to combat this already, added a couple of things. She alluded to that, the elective, the seven bell day sort of thing. So, yeah, it's good.
Yes.
I'm going to write that down.
Ms. Bolton?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Morosky is saying, you know, the community particularly is, and we are too, particularly interested in any kind of disparities regarding discipline. But the reality too is that there may or may not be disparities as to school, children being assigned or classified or categorized as kids that are in need of special help that may not actually meet the criteria. But we, there's so many things that we have to look at. And to the point about AP, it's also the extracurricular piece. It's also, if you will, even class size differentials in buildings. So it's just, you really just start to kind of peel away and get to the heart of it. So yeah, there's plenty of good things to do to fix this.
Okay, my only comment, and I do want to read the red line version, and I promise that I will get my comments to you before your meeting. But Ms. Bolton alluded to it. I think we have to be pretty, she used the word adamant, about our word choice. This is very generous, but I think we have to call it what it is. And systemic and systematic racism is a much more forceful terminology. So let's call it what it is, and then the rest will, my opinion is, if you work on that and you can define that, you'll be able to implement whatever it is, however it's defined, it'll be easier to implement that. But I think this is a good draft. I still think it's a little long, but maybe we, of course, you know. But the content, I think, is really good. But I really think we ought to call it, you quoted, you talked about Kendi, who I've read some of his material. And, you know, it's, we don't want to give so much variation that we lose the meaning of what it is we're trying to do. So let's address what it really is, and that's systemic racism, systematic racism, and what is it, what is it for our school district? So I'll give you my comments. You said something very specific, but I lost it, so I don't remember what it was, but I'll ask you again. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, those two, thanks to Ms. Bowers and Mr. Messer for being on Policy Committee this hall as summer has just been going on. So they've helped get all this here. This is the communities, and I appreciate y'all's feedback.
Wonderful. Okay, great. So we're ready to move on. We have two resolutions, and I'm going to ask Mr. Messer. The first resolution, we're going to do sort of a round robin kind of thing. So Mr. Messer, would you please introduce the first resolution?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. Tonight, I'm very excited to present a resolution recognizing and thanking Father Michael Graham for his service as president of the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Board of Directors. Whereas Father Michael Graham recently announced that he would step down as the president of the Board of Directors for Cincinnati Preschool Promise, and the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education is grateful for the service he provided as the organization's first president.
Whereas after the voters approved Cincinnati Public Schools' Strong Start and Strong Future Issue 44 School Levy in November 2016, Cincinnati Public Schools partnered with Promise Forward and the United Way of Greater Cincinnati to form the Cincinnati Preschool Promise for the purpose of expanding and improving preschool programs in Cincinnati. In January 2017, the United Way named Father Graham the first president of the CTP Board of Directors.
Whereas Father Graham pulled together all of the stakeholders and interested parties who supported this expansion and improvement of preschool and helped to form and define a Cincinnati Preschool Promise organization that could effectively carry out the mission and vision.
Whereas Father Graham was instrumental in ensuring that all stakeholders' interests were considered drafting of a master agreement between Cincinnati Public Schools and Cincinnati Preschool Promise. And he has overseen the hiring and onboarding of successive executive directors who have shared the mission and vision of Cincinnati Preschool Promise.
Whereas during the time Father Graham made this significant commitment to preschool promise, he also was the longest-serving president of Xavier University and has led Xavier through the most significant period of academic and campus growth in the university's history.
Whereas borrowing a phrase from his Jesuit background, Father Graham is a true man for others. Notwithstanding that early childhood education is somewhat removed from his role as a university president, Father Graham truly is a servant leader, and he has provided a fresh outside perspective that is unaffected by any partisanship or personal interest in the leadership of the preschool promise. Father Graham's only interest has been that the Cincinnati Preschool Promise organization successfully carries out its mission and vision of expanding and improving preschool for early childhood students in the city.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education thanks Father Graham for his service as the first president of the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Board of Directors and wishes him the very best in all of his future endeavors submitted on behalf of the Cincinnati Board of Education.
Okay, it's been moved. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
It should be Member Bates.
I'm sorry?
It should be Member Bates seconding it.
Okay.
She has this attachment to Xavier.
Okay, just a reminder, we did...
Yeah, I'm paying tuition right now, so.
We did talk about this last time. They're doing a virtual, they have their virtual meeting on the 17th, and I will be presenting this to him. And we will work with administration or board staff, I'm not quite sure where it goes. But we usually try to, when people are able to be here physically, we kind of make it look pretty and present it to them, to him. So we will do that and make sure that he gets it. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution.
Thank you. This is a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the school year of 2020, 2021. I submit for approval, and I think we all are aware what this is, because this is kind of perfunctory and procedural, so.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Yes, Mr. Lindy?
I had some discussion, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Member Bolton, just as it's my first rodeo with this one, could you just explain a little bit about the perfunctory part of it for some context?
More than annually, we have to usually find ways to transport kids that we cannot in a way that makes sense, safety-wise, financially, or distance-wise, makes sense for us to transport them via a regular method, so to speak. So there is money provided for other ways of transportation for individual students. And I would be happy if the Treasurer can add to that, that would be great.
The rates for the subsidy are defined by... Hold on, hold on, Mr. Lindy. Ms. Wagner was trying to also add to that, and then we'll get your comment.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to say that the rates of subsidy are defined by the Ohio Department of Education, and the Transportation Department determines whether it's financially to be or appropriate to transport these children or to pay them the stipend. And so the board has to approve those stipend payments.
Okay. Go ahead.
I really appreciate that, Treasurer Wagner. I think the only outstanding question I had is, this is, if I'm right, this is not a change, basically reauthorizing the same thing we've done before. Is that accurate?
Very normal. Happens every year.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I have a very short report, and I believe they're pulling up my PowerPoint slides. You can go to the second slide, please. So I wanted to take this opportunity to just connect some dots in terms of where we started our journey with distance learning and blended learning and the safety protocols. Everyone is aware that our major priorities, as was stated earlier, are really centered around safety and academics. And so last spring, in April, when we formed two groups, one to work on the academics and the other to work on a safety team planned for the entire district, and then we launched our safety school campaign. Next slide, please. Overall, with safety following on, connecting the dots, we do have a district-level safety plan as well as one for each school. We now have an active, live COVID-19 dashboard for our schools as well as central office, tracking confirmed cases for students and for staff. We have a medical advisory team to help us interpret the data as it's related to the health concerns for Hamilton County and the city of Cincinnati. We have conducted safety audit plans, safety audits of all of our schools, and it's on an ongoing basis. We provide testing for our students who have parental permission from parents right on site, and then a courier system to take those tests over to Children's Hospital with a very fast turnaround time back to CPS. We also started the beginning of the school year with staff testing, and we now have ongoing staff testing at all of our sites, which we are scheduled out over a period of time. Next slide, please. As it relates to schools and our buses, we have a COVID-19 hotline for employees to be able to report concerns. We also have public health nurses for every single one of our buildings, and this is new for CPS, in addition to isolation rooms at all of our schools where we can separate those who are exhibiting symptoms. For students who are in distance learning on the days that they are not in attendance school, we have meals that we distribute to our kids to be able to take home during the times that they are not with us, as well as bus monitors to be able to maintain social distancing and provide masks for students who may not wear a mask on the bus. In addition, we have cleaning kits for our classrooms and an updated ventilation system to be able to pump more fresh air from outside into our school buildings. Next slide, please. In terms of the academic work, which you've heard a lot of this work this, earlier this evening, our students are able to have devices at home with them. We have a one-to-one initiative, pre-K through 12th grade, pre-K through second grade have iPads, and then third through 12th grade have laptop computers. We have a Wi-Fi program that is free to our CPS families who may need to take advantage of Wi-Fi. CPS TV is continuing to provide programming for our students online and at home. We use the platform Schoology to deliver our instruction, as well as Google Meet for video conferencing with our teachers and our students. The Cincinnati Digital Academy is up and running and continuing to accept students as they are needed, as they need that service for our district. And we have an updated distance learning website that we continue to pump information into on a weekly basis so that our families and our students are informed about what's happening as it relates to our academic plan. So that's just an update to kind of take us through our journey from where we began in August with our two teams to where we are right now in November. And that concludes my verbal presentation in addition to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion to approve the recommendations of the Superintendent. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
We're going to divert a little bit. Julie had trouble connecting, so she connected, and I said we would allow her a few minutes to speak. Julie, I sent you in, so you need to accept. Does she accept?
I don't see her yet. Oh, there she is.
Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, can you hear me? First, I would like to say I am really proud about the pass...
Can you click on your visibility screen so we can see you?
Yes. Can you see me?
No. There you are. Okay.
So first, I would just like to say that I'm really proud of all of the work that all of the teachers have done for the passage of the levy. We did have teachers at every one of the polling places reminding people as they enter the polls to vote and support Issue 17. And there were some parents tonight who were questioning about the remote option if to stay at your homeschool and not go to the CDA. What we have heard is that parents with their children engaged in the learning, not just watching it. And the streaming is like watching a TED Talk. It is not interactive, and it doesn't, and it has kids just looking at a screen of a teacher teaching a class all day long. I don't think this is really what any of teachers or parents were expecting, and it seems kind of difficult since teachers haven't been given the type of equipment they need to effectively do that. In the district, there may be some teachers who have the technologies in their rooms and the knowledge of how to use it to make the streaming interactive, but most teachers do not, and this creates another equity issue. That is why I'm suggesting that each teacher team needs to determine what is best for them. I believe that parents and students desire to have Google Meet sessions like were done when we were in full remote learning. And personally, if there are teachers that are in danger of possibly being cut, this might be a time that the schools can draw up a plan to provide instruction through Google Meet to those remote students. Initially, I believe that there was another speaker who was talking about the latest data. The data that we saw today is from October the 29th, which was last week, and it's not reflective of what is going on now. Initially, DPS was having about three positive cases of COVID per week, and now we are identifying that many cases or more per day. And just yesterday, we had six staff and one student who were confirmed. On Sunday and Monday, there were 10 positive staff cases. On Friday, there were eight student cases and five staff cases. So students and staff are escalating in the number of cases per day. And so I really think that it's time that schools look at these numbers and the impact that it is having, because with the number of quarantines, it's getting really difficult to make sure that all classrooms are covered. And I do know that there's many teachers who are really worried and concerned, especially now as they are entering into the buildings. If we go remote, it would help with this, that we could go back to the remote where kids could have interactive lessons five days a week. We would not be risking students. We still have a way that families... a week. We would not be risking students. We still have a way that families can pick up if they're, for the food packets. The district is in much better place today than they were last year or the beginning of the year. From the presentations you saw tonight, you saw how innovative our teachers are. You've seen how much they are working for this to happen. Teachers are saying that the attendance of, on the Google classrooms that were interactive, kids were even more engaged in what, in many schools and classrooms than what they are now. And so we need to know when we were going to be going remote since we are meeting the requirements to be remote. And it's because it cannot happen in one day. Teachers have to know, parents have to know, it takes time to do that. And tonight, from the presentations, it almost felt to me and to many other people who have been texting me as if the district is acting as if we are not in the middle of a pandemic and that these things are not going on and look at how we're just moving forward. I think it's dangerous. It's dangerous for not just our staff, but also for all of our students and their families. As you know, students who may be asymptomatic are not getting tested. They are only being tested if they have symptoms. And so many, many children could be carriers of COVID and we don't know it. The parents who are very outspoken and saying that they want their kids back at, no matter at what cost, many of those parents were the parents whose kids are not having to ride the bus to get to school. They're in neighborhood schools where they can walk. They, the parents have their own private transportation and that isn't fair for all of the other kids who don't have those types of opportunities. And so I wish that there would have been more discussion about it this evening instead of everything is copacetic and we are all happy to be where we are because that is not the case. It concerns me that so many-
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
One sentence, I'll be off, that we're going to be losing staff and we're not going to have enough staff to cover all of our classrooms, which is another problem and what kinds of teachers, if teachers leave the profession altogether because of this inflexibility. So I just want, I don't want to wait until the next school board meeting for us to make a decision. This should have been the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Superintendent, did you want to respond?
Yes. So first of all, I do want to acknowledge and thank all of the teachers who really came out to support teachers, did mailers, they addressed envelopes, they wrote personal letters. I did visit several voting sites yesterday and teachers were out there on their day off handing out literature and making sure that everyone was aware of issue 17. So to all of our teachers as well as President Sellers, thank you so much for all of your support. It made a huge difference. I also want to take the time to just really thank all of our employee groups. All of our employee groups really stepped up. I think that Jeff Crystal is like Mr. CPS. I have pictures of him with huge signs and he is just like over the top with enthusiasm about supporting the district that he loves so much. So thank you for that from CAST and Jeff and Afsmi and all of the unions have done a really outstanding job. So thank you. And so I didn't want to miss this opportunity. So thank you, President Sellers, for bringing that forward. The other, just one thing that I wanted to make sure that President Sellers is aware of, in terms of the distance learning at your home school, each school is developing a plan for how this will work within their school. And so this is not being dictated from central office. There is one caveat, though, and that is the fact that every single teacher cannot stream because if every single teacher streams, that's when the bridge will fall. So teachers just know as well as President Sellers that each school has been asked to develop a plan for their team for the kids who have asked for this service. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. All right. So at this point, we want to, I need a motion to approve the report of the treasurer.
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh.
Ms. Bolton?
I was very happy to see the sum of dollars on the last page of the report. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I saw that too, Member Bolton.
Okay. Thank you. I had two comments. One, and just to go to show that great minds think alike, Laura just said just about everything I was just going to say. That's okay. No, it's great. But I do want to add my thank you to the public for their trust. We take our role as financial stewards very seriously. We very much appreciate the passage of issue 17 that adds a small measure of our financial stability for the future. In addition to what Superintendent Mitchell said and thanking all the volunteers for all the work they did from CPS and CPP and the community, I wanted just to have a special shout out to Jen Sutmoller. I think this is his sixth levy with us. He keeps us very organized and informed and supported and we really depend on him. He's an awesome partner along with Burgess and Burgess. So thank you again. The second comment, the very next step to our financial stability is we were notified today that the PUP Patterson House Bill 305 formula will be, the simulations will be released on Friday. So I've signed up for the webinar to go through. I will certainly keep the board informed. Philosophically, this is a great formula for the district, but the devil's always in the details and always the last minute adjustments. So I'm cautiously optimistic this will be helpful. But I will certainly keep you informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Inquiries and updates. OSBA conference starts November the 7th. The Cincinnati Public is presenting on our equity policy. Mr. Hoing and Ms. Bolton and myself, so tune in and you can tell us all about it afterwards. Okay, any other inquiries and updates?
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Just to follow up on that, the statewide report card reform committee that has functioned out of the OSBA's urban network is also presenting the spotlight report with full details of what the proposal looks like and the justification for it. So it'll be a two-hour presentation. It's a great way to kind of catch up on what these folks have come up with. It's very challenging and very needed, as we all know.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any assignments? Yes, Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I had given an assignment at the last meeting for the administration to share what they thought our most important priorities and measurable outcomes could be, and I wanted to see if I could get an update on the status there.
Yes. So the priorities that we feel are most important are related to health and safety and that speaks to the data that we provide at every single one of our board meetings. It also speaks to our dashboard and the safety protocols that we're putting in place to ensure the safety of everyone within our buildings. And then academic progress as it relates to blended learning at this point in time. And then obviously when we continue or increase more days, then we'll make some adjustments as it relates to academic progress. And so those are the things that we hold as priorities at this point in time, which are aligned to the board's goals. And then there's always the financial stewardship of the district.
I appreciate that and I think those sound like three great areas. I think the next piece there seems to me to be some measurable outcomes for each of those. Did you take that away as part of the assignment last time? If not, can I make that a part of the assignment for next time?
Can I respond to that? I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better directed through one of the committees or either part of the board's overall work session when we're all together? This sounds like a full board conversation. And we have some of those measures already, am I not, am I correct? Okay. Would that be helpful, Mr. Lindy, to you?
I'm not sure, President Jones. I think where, what I'm, where I'm hoping we could get is that it's clear for us, for the administration, for the public on a small number of most important priorities and outcomes that we talk about in the board meetings and that we're aligning our time and resources to those few number of priorities and outcomes. I haven't, if they exist, I guess I haven't seen them or I might have missed them. Am I missing them?
Well, go ahead, Mr. Messer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the first step is reviewing the strategic plan and then the annual plan that's tied to that, which does have metrics tied to it. I think maybe your question is, has anything changed to that? You know, maybe safety wasn't specifically called out, so is it something that's added? But I think that has to always be our guide. You know, if we start creating then additional plans on top of the plan, then it kind of obviously creates chaos. So maybe that is like a first step is to assess the strategic plan and specifically the plan for this year and say, is there anything missing based on the current world?
I, I would actually suggest that this be a topic that we can add to our first work session agenda in January to review, kind of do a review, as Mr. Messer was saying, of the strategic plan, which, which has all the measures and all of that in there. Maybe that might be helpful for you.
I, I'll chime in there, President Jones, and it may be that we can't solve this issue tonight, but I do want to say that for my part, that feels too late because half the school year would have passed without us being clear on what, what we're trying to accomplish and, and like against what we're spending the district's money. And so I may be alone in that position. I hope not, though. I mean, for me, it seems absolutely crucial that we're clear about what we're trying to win on so that we can track back to that when, when we look at, at how things are going in the district and how we're spending our resources. And it may, this may be a bigger topic that we can solve in this meeting, but I did want to at least advocate for moving as quickly as possible to get into that picture.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I appreciate the suggestion of, I think also Mr. Messer's right and we're due for a review and update and rethink of our strategic plan. I think that could happen fairly, you know, not quickly or whatever, where this work session in January. I think that does make sense, looking at that. And for me, at least what's guiding me right now is, or very frankly, are the five guidelines for this period of COVID that we're in. Those have really been helpful for me to use as thinking points. But I do think a review of the strategic plan, and this will sound kind of crazy except for people that have been on school boards, sometimes we're bored commits to particular things, but I remember, you know, unfortunately, some people call it like special interests or whatever, but they aren't. They're things that you personally and professionally focus on over time. And so I think that's reasonable to, at least in that interim, for all of us to keep working through that as individual interests. But we do need to review the strategic plan as soon as we can, I think.
President Jones, this is the last thing I can, I can close out. Can I just make one more point?
Yes, go ahead.
From my part, I'm not asking, and again, board, other board members may feel differently. I'm not asking necessarily for like a refresh on our strategic plan. I think there's, there's, the administration is doing their, and I truly believe this, absolutely their very best to navigate us through an unprecedented crisis. I, what I'm, I actually think the three priorities that the superintendent articulated were great. All I'm asking is that we put some numbers next to them and say, you know, here's what we want to deliver for children and for the community during this unbelievably different kind of year. And then as we have meetings together, we check in about how close or far, far away we are from achieving those outcomes. So that's, that's, I just wanted to clarify a little bit and say thank you for the time.
Okay. All righty. Any other assignments? I, I, what, let me just say, Mr. Lindy, I think what you're saying suggests to me, what you're asking for is additional conversation around it. And maybe what we can do, maybe what we can do at some point, and maybe you and I can talk about this, if you want to put it on the agenda to have an agenda discussion, I would just ask that it not be sort of in the next meeting or next two meetings because in order to give it, in order to, to make it worthwhile, the discussion, we need, the superintendent needs time, we need time to sort of think through it, but we also need time to even talk about so that we can all be on the same page. Because I'm not sure all of us are on the same page with you and maybe it's just me not really understanding what it is you're asking for that's different than what we already have. So if you and I could talk about it and get it cleared up and then maybe we can put it under a board matters item. Is that-
Yeah, I think, I would love to talk more about it. And I do truly believe there could be multiple ways to win. And what I'd like to do is find a way to get the best possible outcome as quickly as possible. And I would be delighted to chat about it.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, any other assignments? Last call. All right. Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.